Progress, it's not really recording.
I mean, I call the Tuesday, Senator Hemmer's second, Sauterton Borough regular council meeting to order. And as you would have heard by the announcement, this meeting is being recorded via Zoom. So tonight is a little bit of a festive occasion and subject which will come up in just a few minutes. But it's unfortunate that this falls the day after a holiday on Tuesday, so we don't have as many members of the public, which I know will be happy to congratulate Steve at this point in his life. Also, just a quick reminder, we won't adjourn the meeting at the conclusion of this. We'll convene to an executive session to discuss personnel matters. And when we leave, to go to the conference room, we have no intention of coming back to this room. We'll just close out the regular session from there, as you were wondering. So at this point, we please rise for the invitation. And Heavenly Father, we just thank you for everyone that's here tonight. I pray that you would bless everyone. I pray that you would guide council in our deliberations and we'll give you praise and glory and your, we regret amen. Please remain standing for your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic. And one nation, under God, in its own liberty to do the justice for all.
Thank you, we're initiated. Secretary, will you please note for the purposes of the recording, the attendance?
Of course, yes. Um, with Holly and Richard are going to talk good with fire.
Thank you very much. And council will have a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the September 2nd, 2025.
Second.
Okay, I have motions by councillors Littlefield and Costa for the consent agenda, which will include all minutes of all this four regular session, obviously team work session, as well as approvals for the month of August bills and the recurring bills for September. Are there any necessary amendments to the minutes? Okay, very none, or in favor of that motion, please say aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, that's your management. So now we're going to move forward to presentation. I'm up there on record pace tonight. Yeah, thank you. You're in too, Rich.
Good evening all. Um, just wanted to say that our August 3rd Friday was awesome. And we like the Grand Chief over here again for spearheading the fact that we could get the streets closed down. It was just a great night. We really had a great dinner out in Cooper in August, so we're really happy. I also want to thank his staff, Public Works, and the Fire Police for all the help they gave. So we're really looking forward to the final two, September and October. And have a lot of stuff planned for those nights, so we don't have a method. Um, we officially made the decision in the board at our last meeting to cancel Archim. We are no longer going to go through with Archim. The interest was dwindling over the past three years. And when speaking with the different businesses in town, a lot of them were saying how they don't participate. Um, even some artists in and around the area weren't really interested in it. There's so much that happens in the fall, so I believe I brought this up last time, but we definitely are canceling that and we are reimagining it then for next year. So we'd like to do something kind of in the late winter, early spring. So we're working on that right now. I'll keep you posted. Our beautification committee started a brick book project. Um, you might have seen it if you came by our table on 3rd Friday. We saw this idea in some other towns and we are painting the bricks to look like the covers and the um, ends of books. And what we're going to do, once we have all 40 of them done and businesses are going to be involved, we're going to ask businesses to put them in their locations. It can be outdoor, it can be outside, they're all treated and weatherproof. And then we're going to have kind of an interactive activity for the last couple of months of the year that people that can download, you know, a QR code, find these bricks, you know, send it back to us. And then they can do the artful place in town. But again, that brings people in town into businesses, interacting with people and the businesses hopefully wanting to take part in that. So we're going to see how that goes. But we're enthusiastic about that. It's something real little, doesn't cost anything for the business itself. I'll keep you posted on that. Um, the now that school is back in session, the electrical box painting project is out to all the students. So we will be collecting the top three or four that we like and we'll be presenting it to you all by council. Um, and so I will live by you is coming together. I think they have a couple of weeks to turn in their ideas for that paper. Our reauthorization status has been going along nicely. We had our first hearing on August 14th here. Uh, we had a few property owners come out and had some really good conversations. Um, some good questions about our organization and things hopefully we could answer for them. Our next one is going to be Monday, September 22nd here. And all of those notices go out this week to people. And last, economic development, we're just waiting to hear from a few new places. If we're ribbon cuttings, obviously Starbucks, um, Revive Performing Arts, which I mentioned last week. And now the Gator Card Day, which is going to be in the basement of Exeter Bay's building. Um, they're officially opening on September 14th. So I'm coordinating with Jared, who's the owner, to do ribbon cutting. Any question?
Questions for you? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see Penny or anyone from the library, so we'll forego that. Before I turn it over to the mayor, are there any other presentations, of course, coming? Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
All right. I know, but weird, we have not seen this setup here in 37 years. But Jason, you look good. It's a weird, a funny thing happens when you're, I guess, a good employer and all your employees stick around for four decades. And that is that everybody also retires at the same time. So uh, so we've had Michael and Sal, Willie and Jim all retire. And now Steve, we're celebrating your retirement. So we'll picture it in the year 1988. Mike was our brand new borough manager and Quinn was our chief of police. The sewer treatment plant hadn't even been built yet and the ban shell was brand new. And Steve Cole started as our public works director, our first ever public works director. Back when they kept ledgers like this for the borough. So on August 1st, 1988, the minutes say the first item of business was the appointment of our first public works director. Councilman Abe Clemmer reported that interviews were conducted with three applicants. A second interview was scheduled with the person recommended to fill the position. And it was a uh, a public works director to finalize duties, expectations, and policies pertaining to the position. It was the unanimous decision of the public works director search committee that prompted a motion by councillor Abe Clemmer and seconded by councillor Elmer Shelley to appoint Stephen R. Cole to the position of public works director on February 1st, Monday, August 8th, 1988. The motion carried that Steve Cole was present in the audience and was introduced to other council members who welcomed him into the borough family. Steve will begin his employment with the borough on August 8th, 1988. And that brings us 37 years later to what is really a hard job, probably the hardest job we have in the borough. You know, the people on Borough Council and in the office and in the police and the sewer treatment plant all above and beyond every day to keep our residents safe and our systems operating and our bills paid. But all that goes out the window for the resident when the moment they see a pothole outside of their house. Public Works has a nearly impossible job of responding to residents and staff and Borough Council to keep our town happy, beautiful, and operating smoothly. And Steve has mastered that valve perfectly. What I'll miss most about Steve is that he is solution oriented and people driven. He is the definition of a public servant. When duty calls, Steve answers. When a borough initiative or a homeowner project is going sideways, Steve is always there to offer a helping hand and ask, how can the public works group be part of the solution? I have a good example of this with a friend of mine last summer who chose to do, dig his own sewer lateral to his house to the curb, a tent for trench, backhoe, back breaking job. And when he got to the curb, he realized the previous owner had put in the wrong connection at the sidewalk. But Steve was there right away because he knows every inch of Sauterton Borough. He knew exactly what to do. He did not need to help them. But Steve went out of his way to offer advice and even went and got the correct fitting for the homeowner. So the borough knew it was finished properly. And that homeowner was floored by Steve's generosity of time and knowledge. And that is what it means to live in a small town. We're all here to look out for one another. Steve exemplified that attitude and that is just one of hundreds of examples that we have never heard about. Where Steve will go above and beyond to do anything for our residents. That spirit of generosity, Steve and his crew are always willing to lend a hand for the betterment of the borough. We do in-house what most other municipalities outsource because Steve and his crew have a skill set and an attitude that gets things done. At the community pool and in the parks and the road crew and sewer work and sidewalk repair and brush collection and leaf connect collection and snow removal and more. They couldn't say, no, that's not my job, like so many other public works crew probably do. But that's not the attitude that Steve has inspired inside. Steve and his crew are jacks of all trades. If there's a job to be done, Steve is there to get it finished. And as a result, he has undoubtedly saved our taxpayers millions over the past 37 years. Steve also selflessly serves other roles in Sauterton. He's one of the most active members of the Perseverance Volunteer Fire Company. He's our fire marshal and he served as our emergency management coordinator. Sauterton is safer because Steve serves here. Another thing we will sincerely miss about Steve is his incredible knowledge of Sauterton. We take it for granted, but communities mostly run smoothly because of the unseen things. Every sewer lateral and every storm drain and every sidewalk and every tree and every great blade of grass in Sauterton, Steve knows why it's there and when it was installed and what's wrong with it without a fix. And he knows those things because he's probably installed them 37 years. Municipalities pay a lot of money for GIS system to learn about their infrastructure, but not in Sauterton. We already have that encyclopedia and his name is Steve Cole. So I hope, even though there are not very many residents here tonight, uh, will be in the newspaper, I'm sure. So I hope that residents take a moment to thank our public works crew. Whether they're tarring the road in 100 degree heat or working a full shift and then spending all night plowing snow, they are local people who are here to serve us. And for the past 37 years, we have been fortunate to have a true community servant to help. But thank you, Steve, for your many years of service. Your friendly face and helping hand will be sincerely blessed by all of us. Thank you. You may clap.
All right, we're talking with Tracy right before the meeting. And uh, he mentioned in any Doc Shelley. I, my interview was with Doc Shelley, eight clever from the picture. Now, Thurston, there's three of them. But uh, Mike, if you can get to have Doc Shelley, it would be great. But then I found out that Doc Shelley was here for 40 years as a public works slash. So, and it's all about the crew. Now, I can stay here and say what did, what you just said, but it's the whole crew that makes it happen. And I'm happy that you took some money from this on the ranks. And you got a guy there, the president thinks it's basically. Uh, again, thank you. I appreciate it. Wait, we'll have to do any more snow building and.
All right, we have two gifts to present to you in addition. One of them, really nice. Uh, these were all, we can take no credit. Uh, everybody in the office there, everybody has these for you. But would you like to present first the photo? So secretly, many of your former and current colleagues have been writing nice words about you on a frame photo, uh, stories. Read those comments later.
Oh, the worst kind of feature in Sauterton. Christine, she found it on the internet and the second I asked her, she felt like, I thought it. And it was delivered and people were fine, so.
And you walked into my office every day and didn't even know it was there.
Oh. And if you're. Something gift is, uh, this is fun, I hope. The first and only lifetime membership to Sauterton community. Cool for you.
Your tag on, do you all have tags or reactivity every year? And your, your tag says for five, for $25, call me once.
I know, it's been a running.
Oh my goodness.
I am going to present to you, why are you touching my shovel?
Has lost many, many times and seemed to find a gift.
Yeah, to be about our picture. So I could keep regulating.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
You probably don't have to wait for us, there's cake in the lobby. Unless anybody has a different plan.
Yeah, no, if you're here solely to celebrate Steve, please go help yourself out in the lobby. We'll make the rest of this as quick as possible to the two people remaining. We're doing this as quickly as we can.
Steve, you have to take a picture with John Taylor for the paper, whether you want to or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you can work really your entire.
With the shovel. Yeah.
You don't have to listen to her.
Yeah, that's a good picture with the shovel.
We're going to administrative reports and Mayor, you're still up if you have anything else.
The only other thing I have is to remind council that September 13th is the party in the park and you all have VIP, um, yeah, well, what does that mean? Reminding me.
Yeah, what actually?
So Rotary is culminating the park project, you all know that, everybody here. So it would be advisable or, you know, this has been a huge partnership and a huge benefit to the borough. So it would be very meaningful and council can have a strong showing in them.
I'll be there.
Uh, and then after the VIP event, there's a free concert, free ice cream, and free drone show that Rotary is putting on for the weekend. So September 13th, hopefully you can make it. That day is also a bar crawl through Sauterton and a craft show at uh, uh, Reggae Tapper. What time is the VIP? Is it 5 o'clock? So it'll be a busy day in Sauterton.
Also, they're doing the other each and that holiday at 11:00.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
It's so at 11:00 AM, the April 29th, they pick that banner coming from out of town, so I.
Okay.
Uh, they're doing just the installation role. They're going to do like a little ribbon cutting for that with the family that day.
Yes. You're busy there. I'll start the, I'll do that before I start bar crawling.
Nothing. Thanks, sir. Chief?
Good evening. Just have a few brief remarks. We are up and running. The officers and I are obviously getting to know each other and I think the transition is going really well. We have not denied any request for public, or excuse me, police support for any public events. Third Friday, back to school, touch a truck, crossing guard support, um, live music events that was throughout the borough a week or two ago. So there are a substantial amount of requests. September has a lot of requests as well. But this is a positive, this is not a negative. I'm a yes person. This department is filled with yes people and so we will make every effort to say yes. Um, I do need people to work with. I can't shut down 10 roads six times a month. Um, but if they work with me, uh, we can make something work almost every time and so far we have, and that's our goal. We will begin to post the monthly police statistics on our Facebook page. In our ongoing effort to always be transparent, the elected officials will obviously provide it with any data they request. So I'm looking at that monthly report. I have some ideas. I just haven't gotten there yet. But if there's ever any data that you're interested in that's not presented to you as a matter of routine, we will make that happen. If it's important to you and your constituents, it is important to me and my officers. I'm available to this council point per hours a day and I'm also available to this community. And I will take calls personally if they ask for me. I need to continue to be with my partners who serve in this community, fire, medic, sewer, public works. I have gotten uh, this started, but I need to make a better effort, all honesty, and I will over this next month. So I don't come back here and say the same thing. And the officers of this borough are dedicated officers and I'd like to say that publicly. Anything that has been spoken about in the last year, last two years, uh, everything can be revisited, everything. And I'd be happy to work with any, the mayor or any member of this council if they want to take a look at something. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer questions and give the answer back to you if I don't have to.
Are there any questions for Chief? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, Jason.
Uh, we had a total of 610 hours uh, last month in August. Um, some of the highlights, you know, we had 238 hours in Parks and Recs. We had 80 hours of general highway work and sanitary sewer, we had 69 hours. Couple of the highlights, uh, general highway brushers completed, set up for cleanup for 3rd Friday, set up and cleanup for Bonzaru. Uh, uh, street sweeping has been completed as well. Uh, storm sewer work, uh, we had the sinkhole on West Long Street, we had that repaired, that's all buttoned up. Um, and we also did a storm drain repair on uh, in front of 200 Noble Street. Um, sanitary work, uh, we also replaced the sewer lateral at 200 Noble Street as well. Um, that the roots were getting at the curb line, so we replaced all the play line all the way out to the main with new plastic. Uh, Parks and Recs, uh, routine bathroom checks and trash. Uh, new sculptures there, the new sculpture areas have been cut out and planted. Uh, still waiting for mulch, working the mulch in on that. Um, pavilion tables have been painted, concrete pressure was pressure washed. And uh, we installed the sign frame at Holly Hill Park for the Charles Holly family. And uh, one last thing is we did hire a new employee. His name is Kurt Wagner and uh, he has municipal experience already and comes with a CDL. Um, and he is scheduled to start on September 9th, which is next Tuesday. Yeah, I do have some big issues to build with Steve and I appreciate the council and everybody in the office that putting their trust into uh, to uh, get the job done and keep it going. So thank you very much.
Hey, you're off to a big start.
Thank you.
Been doing it for a minute.
Hey, I have one, one comment for you. I noticed uh, usually you'll, you'll outsource some uh, cameras for videotaping the sewers.
Yeah.
And Sarah and I talked about, I know it's probably cost prohibitive, but maybe you could put on a wish list for future capital.
I already got it on there. I started, I started plugging away in the, in the future budgeting, so it is on there.
Oh, nice. And whatever novel uh, products are out there and, you know, that I don't even know of. But I know you guys have a little one, but I don't think that would do that long length.
Right, yeah, that's, that one's basically, the little one that we have is basically for laterals. So we can see, you know, going out to the bees.
Right.
But yeah, that would be beneficial to us to have a, a camera system.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, Mr. Trendy.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my report has been submitted. Um, I'd just like to point out a few things. Number one is kind of talked about in uh, we had the session uh, this evening. Uh, we have a few, is the school water ordinance. Um, tomorrow night, the planning commission has on its agenda to review a standalone school water management ordinance that I drafted. It's required by Pensive A D E P. It governs really a single lot improvements in school management that is required uh, for earth disturbance on those lots. So at some point, the council will, you know, have that during agenda for consideration and approval. Item seven, the employee handbook, there's probably about 10 or 15 drafts for different policies.
Yeah, so I'm standing meeting now to get that buttoned up before I leave, especially for my vacation. So um, we have like one big document now that we're working through. I have a great meeting on Friday. So my hope is by, when I get back um, from my trip, they'll be ready. Cause when I send out Chief, I'll be ready.
And you know, the topics are, you know, equal opportunity, medical leave, progressive discipline, internet and social media use for our employees. So it's, it'll be a comprehensive, uh, policy reworded of the current uh, employee manual. The last one is something, say, assessment appeal that was recently filed for a property in Chestnut Street. I received notice of it. I handed my appearance at the court, so did the Sauterton Borough Solicitor. After we did, I should say Sauterton Borough School District Solicitor. Uh, once we did that, uh, the appeal was withdrawn, so uh, without, without reason. So what, I don't know what the basis of all this is.
What is that, probably?
It's the New Horizon Storage Facility.
I don't know.
Oh, this, it wasn't a large parcel, it was. I think the borough was getting about $4,300 in taxes a year.
Yeah.
No, that. So that's, here are my highlights of my report.
Thank you. Any other questions, any questions to wish to? Thank you, Dan. Hey, the manager.
Well, sorry on the high note, since the pool season's over. Yeah, it's your day. I was not in the pool all weekend. Uh, but I didn't get any, me and boys mailed to the kids sitting in call to practically. They didn't call Jason, so we're going to call it a successful one. And what I don't know, the. To date, our revenue is close to $389,000. Um, which means like, we may have surpassed 2024's revenue. Um, that was 3716. So I'm calling it a win all around. Um, Christine has been working on pooling expenses for me. Uh, that's probably not the, uh, financial that he and I had talked about. Um, and so we might break even if we forget that we have a loan payment. Call you the winner. Um, so it was a good season overall, the staff were really great. Um, we were just talking about it. I don't think that there's anyone that like, I wouldn't bring back, which is kind of unusual. Uh, we had good management staff, we promoted two of the kids mid-season um, to be kind of assistant managers and they ended up finishing the season for us. Um, cause our primary manager went back to school a little bit earlier. And they did a great job. So I'm excited about next year. Um, we should have a good management staff and all should be right with the world and hope is on. So, um, the police department, um, it has advertised an administrative assistant position. Um, in the 2025 budget, we budgeted about a three or four month overlap between the new person and Diana. So that's, we're on track to do that. Um, we have interviews starting next week. So that's where I'm tasked to do that. Um, we have interviews starting next week for that. Uh, my goal is to have everyone needed down before I go on vacation so that while I'm gone, chief and Sergeant Lukens can pick their finalist and we'll be ready to go when I get back. Um, we've had a lot of great applicants, um, and a really great response. So I'm hopeful that we'll find a good person. Diana is about to retire in January. Um, the other thing is our insurance manuals, our insurance, uh, our commercial liability, uh, vehicle, all of those policies are September to September cycle. And so they just renewed yesterday. Um, so last year, we've kind of refined our coverage for vehicles specifically and that generated just over a fourteen thousand dollar savings for this year, um, which actually really helped us. Um, overall, there was an eleven percent increase to our quote. Eleven percent of that is an auto, uh, adjustment for, um, to account for the cost building and property. Um, so it was just a seven percent auto apply from the insurance. And then there was an additional percentages for other increases, um, that they didn't really get into detail on, I think, just because they can. Um, but with that savings of the fourteen thousand, we only saw a two percent increase from twenty twenty-four. So our budget should stay pretty consistent. Um, in twenty twenty-six, um, with our insurance figures, which I'm happy about. I kind of take the win where I can. Um, we did get numbers back for our health insurance renewal and it's been, we're seeing a nine point two percent increase just. And then. Kind of stupid.
No, what about that?
And then the deductibles are going up as well, which will generate additional costs for us. So insurance overall is kind of high right now, um, but we, we made it through this year relatively undefeated. Um, and then I do just have a couple like explanations for the M M O, um, that I can leave to do that, um, under business.
Okay. Does there any question, uh, first level questions to question? Thank you, ma'am. And are there any committee reports this evening?
I have one.
Okay.
So public safety, Matt, for the first time with chief. Um, we met, uh, we're gonna meet, sorry, every third Thursday. So from here on out, we have a lot of things to work on. Some things are new, some things are old, but it was a good meeting.
Yeah, and maybe, uh, could be a good opportunity with chief on board now to circle back and bring in occasionally at least some of the other, but potentially the M S C or fire.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, other, other people that contribute to our emergency response and public safety.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, and I just have one from executive and administrative. Uh, Sarah already gave us an alert for one of the meetings, but just like last year, he prepared to sacrifice a couple hours on a, on a couple of Mondays in October. We're hoping not to go into November because a stretch goal would be to approve the budget for twenty twenty-six at the November session, but if we can't do that.
You both asked for it.
Okay.
Um, meeting would be the approval, um, but the budget we need to be buttoned up for early November in order to meet that.
Yeah.
I sent you all one for the third Monday in October. My hope is that, like, I'll meet with finance committee, I think, before that. And then we'll have that. And then I think the work session, unless there's any like pressing business in October, we'll get dedicated to finishing the budget.
Yep, okay, perfect. That's staying correct on that. So, yeah, we'll, we will meet that first Monday in December, but probably not a work session in December.
And then my hope would be to have your full budget packet like at your desk for the October and October stage. So you can have that time to review everything.
Excellent. Okay, anyone else? All right, then. Uh, that's time I will open. I will not open. Well, I will open public comment. Uh, chiefs, if you have anything. Mr. Leary.
I am so proud to be part of this organization. You have been a proud part of this organization. I'm looking at Jason. I'm looking at Steve. I'm looking at the, at the wonderful people we've lost and the wonderful people we gained. And I'm looking forward to, uh, uh, spending some quality time over lunch with Chief of Mine.
Awesome. And getting a handle on their just solid.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'll close public comments and we will move forward to the business of the evening. So our first, uh, well, would you like, you were gonna add on the M M O, right?
And certify and approve the calculation for the M M O. Um, this has gone to the pension group, so they have given their like sample approval that my amount is correct. Um, so the M M O is the minimum pension. Um, there's different variables that go into calculating that. Most of them have to do with how much money is in our pension plan, how well it's done and what they anticipate going forward. And then we calculated based off of our anticipated payroll in twenty twenty-two. So it says on the form that you guys have the W two payroll. I tend to go a little bit higher to account for any potential increases or new positions so that we're staying ahead of our pension. Uh, we saw a tiny, tiny bit, um, of a reduction in our M M O this year, but a win is a win. We're taking them where we can get them right now. Um, so they went down, it was a fraction, um, but it did go down. So it's not any increase in cost. Um, the numbers are big, um, but we do repeat paid aid and that last year was calculated at roughly sixty-two hundred dollars a unit. Um, sixty-two, a unit for a non-uniform employee is one unit for a police officer is two units. So roughly twelve thousand four hundred dollars we would repeat from the state for each of the police officers on our plan. And then for our non-uniform employees, it's fifty-two hundred employers. So I'm calculating very rough numbers, a hundred and fifty. That's very conservative that we would receive in state aid. I've heard that it's potentially going up, uh, but they don't tell us until we get it. Um, so I've heard sixty-four, sixty-five hundred a unit, um, which would be helpful, but we don't know. So I try to be conservative. So I'm guessing a hundred and fifty thousand state aid. Um, which would be about, the police pension plan would be paid about seventy percent by state aid and forty percent of the non-uniform would be funded by state aid. Um, so our budget would need to include about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to cover our pension M M O for twenty twenty-three.
Um, before we take that motion, uh, we may as well ask any clarified questions for Sarah of, of it now if you have any. And I just have one. The, the one we, we used to get from Steyer, it would be like a a risk of the funding or, or underfunding for the.
Steyer, it would come from the borough's actuary.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and so we weren't supposed to have, they do them every odd year. So I was hopeful that we would have one back that we could calculate based off of for this year, the new one. The twenty twenty-three valuation is what we're currently calculating at and that is what we're receiving from the pension company. Um, and that one was fairly unfavorable.
It was, yeah. So that's, that was gonna be my next question. Yeah.
Be able to calculate.
Right.
But it's tight, um, with as many as they do. They do them for every single pension plan. So the turnaround, I guess, did not happen in time for this.
But it's good. I think you're hitting the middle of the road anyway, a little more aggressive, not the, not the, not the.
Or it hurt sometimes when we're doing the budget, but it's either you deal with it now or you deal with it later. My God, I was just telling you about their, their M M O went up like, uh, an alarming amount this year and they realized it was because they have been smoothing the pension the last few years and we're kicking the can down the road and now the road is done. And so now they have to pay up. So I would much rather kind of stay ahead of it than be in that position. We had a, a sobering and I know last year to the point that like I called and was like, I think I don't know how to do math and we talked about it. Um, I was doing the math, right? It just was really awful. Um, so we had that last year and at least this year we're prepared to kind of hold steady in the budget.
And just one more question. There was assumptions for employee contribution. So are those aggressive or was, was that an aggressive number or just whatever number comes up of the computation?
Zero, cause that's what it is right now. We don't have, for police is zero.
Right.
We don't have a contract negotiated. I can't assume.
And non-uniform?
Is three percent.
Okay. Go ahead. Great. Any other questions? Thank you. All right, ma'am, motion please.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve and certify the twenty twenty-six pension minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniform plan, one hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and police plan, one hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. One hundred forty-seven, nine hundred ninety-two dollars.
Awesome. Thank you both. I have motions by Council of Mundon and Littlefield for approval of twenty twenty-six pension minimum municipal obligations in the amounts I've stated by, by Julie. There are no other questions. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. And I don't believe any discussion is necessary, but, uh, I'll introduce it. It's for the handicap parking spot that was, uh, requested by Mr. Feller on twenty-sixth North Second Street. And I went by a couple of times. I didn't see him. Were you successful? Okay, it's okay. We'll, we'll let it know after the fact. Uh, and just a reminder to council, that'll be a handicap spot right across the street, but of course it's not dedicated for his or his, or his wife's use. So, uh, may, that, that obviously is, uh, a necessary, uh, resolution to change those streets. So may I have a motion, please?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the version, uh, twenty twenty-five dash ten, adding a handicap parking space near twenty-sixth North Second Street.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have motions by Council of Littlefield and Rogers for approval of resolution twenty-five dash ten to add a handicap parking spot across the state from twenty-sixth North Second Street. And, uh, when chief uh, educated us before, he and Jason took a look and that'll be right in the vicinity of the fire hydrant. So this place can legally go to the fire hydrant if possible. All right, uh, all in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right, thank you very much. That passes. And finally, everyone will have received this information in, in the packet. So this will also be a resolution to amend our manager's, uh, employment agreement uh, through the end of the year. So I have a motion for that, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, amending the borough manager secretary and treasurer agreement with Sarah Jared Eaton, which was originally adopted August fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
All right, and I like that the proponent made the motion. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Stephanie. Uh, all right. Uh, motions by Council of Paul, uh, Costa, oops, and Rogers for approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven to amend the borough manager, uh, secretary agreement with Sarah Jared Eaton, which was originally adopted on August fifth, on twenty-five.
On twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, and now I'm ended. So are there any questions, comments or concerns? All right, Karen, none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, ma'am. That being for me, uh, at this moment, I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session. Oh, yeah, and, uh, let's add in a, let's add a ten minute recess to go out a little.
Ten minute recess.
Well, yeah. Thank you, ma'am.